Scheduled Greer City Council meeting called and convened this evening, June 27th, 2023. Having called the meeting to order, we are going to open the meeting in a little bit different way. We have a public hearing this evening. At a public hearing, we disclose an issue that is before this council and before our community. And at that point in time, we'll entertain residents that would like to speak in that regard, if they would like to, to the subject announced. In this case, our public hearing this evening is the City of Greer Budget Ordinance Financial Year 23, 2024. This is an ordinance relating to the fiscal affairs of the City of Greer, South Carolina, making appropriations, therefore levying taxes, and to provide for an effective date. During the public hearing, which I have called to order, it is, as I said, a chance for you to make comment in regards to the City of Greer budget ordinance for fiscal year 2023 and 24. I would ask that that be done in an orderly fashion if we have more than one person that would like to speak. We ask all our speakers to come to the podium. If they would, that gives us an opportunity to get your comments as a matter of record, and you can appear on a YouTube channel. And so I know that is important to some of you in terms of your comments, and that would help us out if you will give us your name and address. That is also helpful. So with that, I will offer an opportunity, the first of three, to speak. It's the City of Greer Budget Ordinance Fiscal Year 2023, 2024. If anybody would like to speak, you're welcome to come to the podium at this time. Seeing no one, I'll offer a second time. The City of Greer Budget Ordinance Fiscal Year 2023. This is an ordinance relating to the fiscal affairs of the City of Greer, South Carolina, making appropriations, therefore levying taxes, and to provide for an effective date. If you would like to speak in that regard, please make your way to Having asked a second time and seeing no one indicating that they would wish to, I will ask a third and final time. If you would like to make comment regarding the City of Greer Budget Ordinance Fiscal Year 2023 through 2024, please make your way to the podium. Having called and offered on the third time, no one appears that they wish to speak in regards to the City of Greer Budget Ordinance Fiscal Year 2023, 2024. With that, then I will call the public hearing to a close. With that, we will move on into our regularly scheduled meeting. I've announced that as well, too. So if you would, please join me as we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for an invocation for council.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Let us pray. Counsel, we assemble here this evening to do the work of this city and to act on the city's behalf as we serve as public servants in this elected environment. And so I pray that we'll be mindful of the citizens of this city, each and every one, and remember that from the least to the most, that we will be cognizant of the needs of our entire city, a growing city and one that we all need to be mindful of as it changes on a regular basis. And so we ask your insight and understanding. We thank you for a successful festival this past weekend and an opportunity to celebrate and to show appreciation to those that have given of their time and of their talent and, in some cases, their lives to make sure that we enjoy the freedoms that we do today. And as we go into this Fourth of July week next week, that we will have an opportunity to continue to thank those people that not only guard our borders now and wherever they may be in the world, but also serve in various different functions here in the states and here right at home. And so we ask all these things in Christ's name and for His sake. Amen.
especially when this is one of the times. Andy and I were having a conversation just earlier this evening about the number of employees that we've got and the changes that we're receiving in many of our departments. And we certainly like to recognize those
With that, we will move to the public forum, a time where we offer for those that wish
folks that have reached a service point with us that we can recognize them. So this is
to speak to something relative to something on the agenda this evening. Ms. Duncan, anyone
Resolution Number 7-2023, a resolution recognizing and commending the City of Greer employees.
to appear in public forum this evening?
No, sir.
With that, then, counsel, let's move to the minutes of the council meeting. In
Whereas the City of Greer endeavors to recognize and reward its dedicated and faithful employees,
your package, you have the June 13th, 2023 minutes. I'll entertain a motion that they
whereas Brian Collins has served in the Fire Department for 10 years, Curtis Maron
be received.
So moved.
Second.
And a second. Any items of note for the clerk?
has served the Parks and Recreation Tourism for 10 years, Eric Herman has served the
Hearing none. Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Arrowood?
Public Services Department for 15 years, Chris Barnard has served in the Police Department
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
for 30 years, and Mary Jane Ryan has served in the Police Department for 35 years. Whereas
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
these employees have served in a distinguished and professional manner now, let it be therefore
Yes.
Counsel, it is our privilege, as is from time to time, to do an employee recognition.
resolved that the City Council in the City of Greer, South Carolina, in a meeting duly
I'll ask Mr. Merriman to join me at the front.
assembled wishes to officially recognize and commend these employees for the distinguished and dedicated service which they have performed. Be it therefore resolved that the City of Greer hereby rewards these dedicated employees with a certificate of appreciation and administrative day of with day approved this 27th, the day of June 2023. As I call your name, if you would, come to the front and stay with us for just a moment as we get a picture. Brian Collins.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Place right there. Curtis Maron.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Eric Harmon. Chris Barnard.
That's hilarious.
Matt, everybody.
Small victories and big. And so for those that are, including Chris, that have served 35 years with the city, we appreciate your service. And for those that have just served five years, we're appreciative of your service equally as well. And thank y'all for being here this evening and all that y'all do to help make sure everything's okay at home and keep the home fires burning while we're using your folks. How about that?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Take care. Oh, God bless Chris. He'll probably work another 35 years. got the mayor report. Susan Howell joins us for an overview of our financial statement.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Giving a brief summary of financials as of May 31st, 2023. Starting out with the general fund, we have a year-to-date revenue of $35,739,000. Year-to-date expenditures of $36,288,000, which is right at budget. And our cash balance in the general fund is $193,010,000. Moving on to the hospitality fund, the year-to-date revenue is $3228,000, which is 13% over budget. Our total expenditures are $2,611,000. And the cash balance in the hospitality fund is $2263,000. Finally, the stormwater fund, the year-to-date revenue is $1573,000. The year-to-date expenditures are $696,000. And the cash balance in the stormwater fund is $2989,000. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel? Ms. Howell, I had somebody ask me over the weekend about that financial information and where it's best found on our city website, or is publicly available? Do you want to address that for us, please?
Yes, it is on the website. I think there's a link that goes directly to the financials, and you'll see each month there is some information out there. There's more than this that's actually out there.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're right.
Others?
Thank you.
I don't have a question for Ms. Howell, but I do have a question that I think is appropriate because we're dealing with the final reading of the budget. I was looking through the reports, and I looked at the fire department report and the EMS where they've cataloged or categorized the response times by EMS services to our scenes. We have over a quarter, more than a quarter, this is on a yearly basis, if I've done my math right, a quarter-plus calls that EMS have come to where we're backing them up. The response time has been greater than 10 minutes or more, with some calls where EMS, the response time is greater than 40 minutes. And I understand everybody is busy and so on and so forth, but in essence, we are providing services that the county should be paying for. Are we doing, because in the fire chief and his staff, you know, they've tried to figure out ways to help with this issue with their QRV and, you know, running folks at just certain times of the day because that's when, you know, they've studied the calls, and this is when most of the medical calls happen. But I know Greenville County is going to increase millage by seven mils on the county tax. Mr. Merriman, do you know if the county is going to invest in their EMS labor force to help offset some of these calls where, I mean, a response time of greater than 40 minutes, that's unacceptable?
I would answer that question with, I do know that both Greenville County and Spartanburg County have perpetual openings in, for EMS services. I think they're always looking for those individuals. I don't know that I can speak to their willingness or specifics to investment levels, but I do know that they work diligently to try and staff vacancies. So I think the number of approved positions is reflective of a fully functioning EMS service. I think they have staffing issues that perpetuate those issues. I can look to Chief Flowers to color that a little bit, but that's my understanding.
Well, they have staffing issues, but we're providing staff that subsidize them. I mean, we have hired staff just for that purpose. If we can hire staff, why can't they hire staff? And I think those questions need, somebody needs to approach both EMS directors, county administrators, whoever, because in essence, we're taking city tax dollars. It's just an unfunded tax mandate that we're paying to the counties to provide a service that they're supposed to be providing.
So a couple of things we're doing. Obviously, the QRV program came about because we started seeing some of these patterns and watching that data, which you guys know, we do watch that data on a daily basis. And so it's not just one county, it is in both counties. On Greenville County's side, they are doing things like they're running paramedic academies, EMT academies, things like that. So they're trying to build their employee base by attracting other employees into the mix. I think that it's multifaceted. I think a lot of this, while it's not solely because of COVID, but a lot of this started really being exacerbated during that period of time. I think that one of the reasons that we generally have a better time hiring people is I think it's because of the, you know, the work environment that we provide. And I think that along with that, the level of respect that we provide in that work environment pays dividends in that because those people actually talk to other people. So when we have openings, specifically on the medical side, we don't really struggle with getting those positions filled. The other side of it is, unlike the EMS agencies, we're not transporting. So, you know, those paramedics and those EMTs from these other agencies, they're willing to come in and work with us, one because of the environment, because of the support from council and administration. But they also know that, generally speaking, they don't have to transport. They don't have to struggle with that part of that, whereas both agencies are struggling with the transport, specifically on the advanced life support side. So some of those things that you're seeing in that report is we're getting BLS trucks, transport trucks, so you have two EMTs. And if it's an ALS call, you know, we're there making sure that the people are getting the proper, appropriate care. And sometimes if we can't get an ALS unit, we're having to take and go in with that transport unit because we are doing ALS things, meaning things that the EMTs can't do. So what I can tell you is this, we are monitoring all these data points, and that's why we started, you know, providing that to council, to let you see what we're seeing. And we are tracking that. And now that we've gone out on our, with our own med control, he is on board with that, and he's helping us track those things. And that is going to be some conversations that we'll have moving forward. I don't know yet where that's going to go, but we are building the data to be able to support those decisions moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Others? If not, Mr. Merriman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things on the administrative report tonight. First of all, I do want to recognize Lamar Whitman. Lamar Whitman is retiring with the city, and he was unable to join us this evening. But he is retiring after 30 years and five months of service to public services in the City of Greer. But I want to offer, on behalf of staff, public services, I know counsel, our appreciation, congratulations on his milestone. And I know that some of his colleagues will be visiting him to bring him his retirement gift that we normally do. So I don't want to leave him out. The reminder that election filing begins on July 17th, and the filing window for all races will be open until noon on the 15th of August. Candidates may file with Municipal Clerk Tammy Duncan, to my left, at City Hall between 8:30 and 4:30. Public notice will be published on July 5th and the 12th in the Greer Citizen. Filing fee is $70 for council, $125 for mayor, and $125 for the Commissioner of Public Works. Reminder that the Second Annual Casting with a Cop returns on Saturday, July 22nd, at the Coles Carp and Catfish Lake located at 30 Edwards Road. Contact Corporal Chambers by email at rchambers@cityofgreer.org for more details. Tunes in the Park returns on Saturday, July 22nd, from 7:00 to 10:00 with the Mac Arnold and Plateful of Blues Band. And again, if you look out this window, you will see the Greer Farmers Market, and it will be in town each Tuesday until August the 29th. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, with that, let's move to items of old business this evening, the first of which is the second and final reading of ordinance Number 11-2023. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of a certain property owned by Linda D. Kirby located at 813 Brockman McLehman Road by 100% petition and to establish its zoning classification of R10 for said property. Ms. Byers, any new or additional information in that regard?
Plating Commission held a public hearing on May 22nd and recommended approval.
Comes with approval from Plating Commission. Do I hear a motion to entertain for the purpose of discussion?
So moved.
And a second.
Thank you.
Floor is open for discussion. Comments? Questions? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Second item before us is the second and final reading of ordinance Number 13-2023. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of a portion of a certain property owned by Mertaj Homes of South Carolina, Inc., located on Brockman McLehman Road from DRD to R10 for said property. Ms. Byers, new or additional information in that regard?
There are no updates, but as a reminder, this is the companion case to the previously heard 11-2023.
Thank you, ma'am. For the purposes of discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Third item before us this evening is the second and final reading of ordinance Number 14-2023, an ordinance to provide for the annexation of a certain property owned by Charles P. Bergman and Liesel Buglin at 102 Peachtree Drive by 100% petition and to establish its zoning classification of R20 for said property. Ms. Byers, any new or additional information in regards to ordinance Number 14-2023?
Plating Commission held a public hearing on June 19th and recommended approval.
Counsel, comes with a recommendation from the Plating Commission. For the purpose of discussion, do I hear a motion to receive?
So moved.
Second. And a second. Floor is open for discussion. Questions? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Thank you, ma'am. Last item before us this evening is second and final reading of ordinance Number 19-2023. This is the City of Greer Budget Ordinance Fiscal Year 2023, 2024, an ordinance relating to the fiscal affairs of the City of Greer, South Carolina, making appropriations, therefore levying taxes, and to provide for an effective date. Action is required for the purpose of discussion. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion. Mr. Merriman?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, just by way of update, I provided you all via email, and I think Ms. Duncan provided you just a few updates in a packet at your desk, which is a reconciliation of some budgetary items between first reading and second reading. The main driver of this, obviously with cleaning up a few of the other line items that amounted to about a $9,000 change in the budget, was updated information about the proposed efforts to redevelop or really redo the City of Greer Recycling Center. And you'll see those adjusted changes in the packet to you. But like I mentioned at first reading, it is a balanced budget with no millage increase, and our fees are maintained at the level that they're at as provided in the fee schedule. Once again, I want to thank Mike and Katrina, David and Susan especially, for their work on providing this budget to council, and not to mention all the hard work by many of the people that you see in this room now to help provide the data and budgetary request items to this council. Mr. Mayor, with that, I'm free for any questions, as is staff, to clarify anything in this budget.
Mr. Seifert, any additional information you want to present at this point in time?
No, sir, thank you.
With that, counsel, the floor is open for discussion.
As an overall general question or general statement, I just want to make sure that we have what the departments need to maintain and take care of what we have now. And you and I have had this conversation, and the mayor and I were speaking right before the meeting, we've got a lot of balls in the air. And I understand that. But do we have the dollars to not only keep the grass cut, but to keep it green, to make sure we don't have red grass, you know, big spots of red grass? And you know what I'm talking about. But is that covered according to the department heads? Do we have what we need to maintain what we have?
Well, Mr. Arrowood, I would say, I think, is a general opening statement in response to that, is that if a department head didn't provide a budget, that at a baseline provided complete funding for operations as they exist in a vacuum, I would be disappointed. Now, with that being said, I do not have any department heads that did not request a budget that specifically addressed those needs as a baseline. So I can say with strict confidence that none of the operational items that are needed to maintain what we have have been cut to any substantive level. We intend purely to continue to operate as we have been, given what we've got and what we know we're going to have.
So if we start having some issues with maintaining what we have, then it falls back on the department head, right?
Well, no, it falls back on me. Okay? Because I'm standing here, sitting here, assuring you that that is going to be reflected in this budget. And ultimately, this is the budget I'm presenting to council. So it will not be on a department head, it'll be on me.
Got you.
Others?
I just wanted to thank Andy and Team Greer for all the hard work that they've put into this budget. I always look at the departmental reports, and I'm just sitting here looking at each individual department, and I can think of how responsive the department heads have been over this past year with all the different issues. And the public doesn't see that often, and I know the other council members have the same experience, but people reach out to us quite a bit with certain issues and different challenges and things. And I can see issues that have been addressed by every department head, and I'm just so appreciative of how responsive they always are. And we just do a good job, and I think we run a Class A organization. I mean, you can look out at City Park right now, you can look at our fields, you can look at our roads.
the data and budgetary request items to this council. Mr. Mayor, with that, I'm free for any questions, as is staff, to clarify anything in this budget.
Mr. Seifert, any additional information you want to present at this point in time?
No, sir. Thank you.
With that, counsel, the floor is open for discussion.
As an overall general question or general statement, I just want to make sure that we have what the departments need to maintain and take care of what we have now. We, and you and I have had this conversation, and Mayor and I were speaking right before the meeting, we've got a lot of balls in the air. And I understand that. But do we have the dollars to not only keep the grass cut, but to keep it green, to make sure we don't have red grass, you know, spots, big spots of red grass? That's, and you know what I'm talking about. But is that covered according to the department heads? Do we have what we need to maintain what we have?
Well, Mr. Airwood, I would say, I think, is a, a general opening statement in response to that, is that if a department head didn't provide a budget, that at a baseline provided, complete funding for operations as they exist in a vacuum, I would be disappointed. Now, with that being said, I do not have any department heads that did not request a budget that specifically addressed those needs as a baseline. So I can say with strict confidence that none of the operational items that are needed to maintain what we have have been cut to any substantive level. We intend purely to continue to operate as we have been, given what we've got and what we know we're going to have.
So if we start having some issues with maintaining what we have, then it falls back on the department head, right?
Well, no, it falls back on me. Okay? Because I'm standing here, sitting here, assuring you that that is going to be reflected in this budget. And ultimately, this is the budget I'm presenting to council. So it will not be on a department head, it'll be on me.
I just wanted to thank Andy and Team Greer for all the hard work that they put into this budget. I always look at the departmental reports, and I'm just sitting here looking at each individual department, and I can think of how responsive the department heads have been over this past year with all the different issues. And the public doesn't see that often, and I know the other council members have the same experience, but people reach out to us quite a bit with certain issues and different challenges and things. And I can see issues that have been addressed by every department head, and I'm just so appreciative of how responsive they always are. And, and we just do a good job, and I think we run a Class A organization. I mean, you can look out at City Park right now, you can look at our fields, you can look at our roads, you can, you can see the services that we provide. I mean, I see our staff hustling every day, and just so appreciative of the job that they do, and, and they're just not told thank you enough. And I know they put in a lot of effort and hard work into this budget. And I called you, Andy, the other day and asked you some questions about the budget, and you reassured me that, you know, we're, we're on a trajectory of growth and, and providing a grade A service. And I'm real pleased with where we are and look forward to a bright future for the City
I'm going to piggyback off of what you said, Lee. Really appreciate, especially being a newer member of council, the responsiveness of staff and all the hard work that goes into this. It's very eye-opening seeing the level of effort and the level of care that our department has, our staff, realizing how big of an outfit this is at, you know, $48 million, over 400 employees, looking at this fiscal year. I mean, that's, like Mayor Daner was talking about, top 10 city, this is, this is how you get there. So really appreciate all the, all the time you all take to answer my questions and educate me on a lot of different things. So thank you all.
Andy and I had the opportunity today to go down to the groundbreaking ceremony for the new battery facility in Woodruff. And I ran into Ms. Helm's daughter there, who works for a company that works with BMW to do their special events. And if you have ever been to any event that involves BMW, you know how professional those events are, down to the T. And I was talking to her after the event, and it was a large event, 100-plus people there, well over 100-plus people there. And a large event, lot of coordination. You had U.S. representatives, you had the governor, you had members of the board of BMW there. It was a, it was a, a big deal. And I told her that, that I knew as calm and collected as she seemed to be, that I knew she had a list of those things that she saw that they could do better next time. And it made me think about a conversation that I had with Andy and ask him to share with our employees this weekend. 20,000 people here in the park and downtown over the weekend. And even for those of us that have some insight into, into what it takes to pull off an event like that, from the seats out there, it, it looks seamless. It absolutely looks seamless. And there is, there is just no way to describe how much work and effort and planning that takes. And we are, we are at a certain inflection point now, as, as we consider this budget and, and where we are and, and where we're going, that it takes that type of operation. And, and to Mr. Airwood's point, we, we have to have our best foot forward. And, and it's a, it's an expectation that we want our community to have of us. And, and that's something we talk about in terms of being a top 10 city and being the kind of place that people live and the kind of place people expect those, those kinds of events. But it's not just those kinds of events. You know, despite the fact that we had a festival on, on Saturday that, you know, is, is by far and away our largest, we had a man that, that called me Monday morning to thank the police department for an issue that he had over the weekend that involved seven trips to his house by our police department for a dog issue. Now, he didn't take that lightly, and neither did I, because that's seven trips. We pulled a police officer away from whatever they were doing, directing traffic, trying to get traffic in or out, or, you know, doing their regular routine, all those kinds of things. And that is, that is service well above what would be expected. And I, I, I told that gentleman that, you know, that, that is the kind of service that we offer, but that is not offered everywhere. And we, many of us at this table, three or four of us at this table, remember early on in, in our political careers, some of the innovative things that we had to do to make budgets work, and in some cases, to provide for our employees through special things that we still do today. And I think as we, as we bring in more and more employees, as, as we continue to grow, that is a culture that we have to foster. And so, you know, when, when we, we get a budget that's almost $50 million, I think everybody at this table probably had some angst. If you actually look at what that budget is, including some of the other funding that we get and funding we set aside and some other things, that is, that number grows exponentially. And it can be daunting. It, it, it can be daunting. But that is the world, the new world that we live in now, and the new one that we are creating by intentionality in this, in this community. And we've got to be on board, not just as a council, but as employees. And that's not just department heads, that's everybody in your department. Because with 300-plus, 400-plus, 500-plus employees, we can't be at a point where 95% of them are good employees and the other five are dragging. We've, we've got to be at our best. And that falls to us too, gentlemen and ladies. And it's, it's going to take not only a concerted effort, but it's, it's also going to take a thoughtful effort, because this community is going to ask of us, this administrator is going to ask of us, and our constituents are going to ask of us, what's next? And the expectation that we have set continues to grow. And we're going to have to, we're going to have to find a way to, to meet those. And this budget does, and future budgets will, and future councils will continue to do this, hopefully, because I think this, this community is moving in the right direction. And we've, we've, we've got the people to make that happen, both from our citizenship and from our employees and from our elected officials. So with that, any final thoughts before we call the question on the budget?
Mr. Merriman, I'd simply, or, excuse me, Mayor Daner, I'd simply add, you know, throughout the process, our discussions this year, it struck me, you know, we do have the growth in the budget, but I am very pleased, you know, with, with, I believe, how we are using wisely the taxpayers' dollars to, you know, as we continue to take steps forward, be a top 10 city in this, in South Carolina, as we've discussed, continue to not just, you know, grow organically by numbers, but also just grow in the quality and breadth of service that we're providing to our, to our citizens as well. Again, as many of you have already said, that starts with our people and our leadership. Many of you are sitting in the room today. So again, as many have already said, thank you. But again, I appreciate staff's work and just the careful thought to look even beyond this budget year, but into, you know, decades into the future and how we're, we're using the taxpayers' resources this year. I'm also encouraged, you know, even with the growth and talking to Mr. Merriman, I'm also encouraged, we, we're in a, we have every reason to be optimistic in the upstate and in the City of Greer specifically, economically speaking. But even with some of the overall uncertainty still in the world, I'm encouraged by some of the nimble, nimbleness that I know is built in as well. So even as we continue to strive and to move forward and take those, those aggressive steps forward, I just appreciate the overall thought and approach we've taken. So that, that's in general my comments. I believe as well, in thinking, would we not need to amend the budget to update to the figures provided by staff as well? If so, I'd like to offer an amendment to the budget to reflect the reconciled numbers provided by staff.
Comes as a, comes as a motion to amend the budget as per the additional information that has been given to us. Do I hear a second to that, the motion to the amendment?
A second.
Any comments in the, got a motion and a second. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
No, this is for the amendment?
Amendment. Yeah, this is the amendment. And, and really, we just needed to take action on the reconciled numbers that were provided to you in the packet provided. Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. So now we'll just need the question.
We'll need, we've got the amended budget now. We've got the motion for the ordinance first and a second on that. Further discussion in regards to either the amended budget or the budget itself, or the, or the budget as it is amended.
Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Counsel, let's move to items of new business, the first of which is a bid summary for West Phillips Road pile painting project. SC DOT inspected the bridge on October 2022 and noted deficiencies that needed to be addressed. Mr. Grant?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As the mayor was starting there, DOT inspected this bridge last fall and recommended that we paint all the piles due to rust becoming an issue, and you should have pictures there in your packet. Staff retained the surfaces of a local bridge consultant, JMT, to assist us in preparing specifications for this project. The scope involves painting all 15 steel piles to a depth of 18 inches below grade, as well as addressing some erosion issues under the bridge. There may be intervals of one lane, one lane closure for this work, but at least one lane will remain, will remain open at all times. The project was advertised publicly, and two bidders attended the pre-bid meeting, but only one bid was received, and the bid summary is in your packet. IPC Structures was the only bidder with a bid of $116,250. IPC Structures has performed satisfactory bridge work for the city in the past, and funding is from the Infrastructure and Paving Fund, and staff requests approval to proceed with awarding this contract to IPC Structures. And I'll entertain any questions.
Action is required. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
Second. Floor is open for discussion.
Mr. Grant, this is just preventive maintenance. There's no short term. This is just getting out ahead of anything getting bad.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
This must be some pretty expensive paint they're using.
Yeah, I thought so myself. It's the times we live in, post-COVID, everything is higher these days. But our consultant, you know, stated it's not exorbitant. It's probably a premium, but it's not exorbitant.
They have to excavate down below grade too, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Now, I saw that we've used them before. Had it, do we have previous numbers to kind of give us a?
It was a different job. It was a, they were replacing some wooden piles under a different bridge, so it's really a different scope of work.
Hmm.
But they did a good job on that one. Yeah, so we're pretty confident they can perform well here.
Is this the only deficient, well, I say deficient, but?
Only one we know of now. They, they inspect every two years, so every two years I get an email. Sometimes there's, there's an issue. Sometimes everything's looking good.
But this is currently the only one?
Yes, sir. Correct.
Others?
They feel, they feel like if they do the painting, that that, that allows the steel to maintain the structural integrity moving forward? Is that, is that kind of the gist of it, that you don't paint them, that eventually that it'll, that rust will continue to just break the steel down?
It will, especially around the water level and ground levels where it's the worst. So that's why they have to dig 18 inches below. That's kind of the critical zone there, but, but the entire pile will rust.
I know we don't have many bridges in our inventory, but the, the steel piles, do we go, when we're doing shoulder maintenance, do we check those piles to make sure we don't have any kind of growth around them, you know, vines and trees and things like that which will hold moisture in there?
I don't think they do on a regular basis, but I know like if there's a storm or a big storm's coming, I think they'll check under the bridges to make sure there's nothing, you know, logs under there to, to block or dam up the rivers. That's your manager in storm events.
Do, do we need to put that in our, kind of off-topic a little bit, but it sounds like to me, we probably need to be just checking those piles and, and things to make sure we're not holding moisture around those, those columns or those piles?
Yes, sir. We can look into that. We're trying to get better at maintaining all our infrastructure, so bridges will be a part of it.
Others?
One last question. I know you said we're probably paying a premium for this. Are you confident in going with this particular contractor, or do we need to consider putting it out the bid again?
Well, they were the low bidder on the last job that had more bidder, so by supposition to be, they would be certainly competitive if there were other bidders as well. And they did a good job at a reasonable price last time, so my expectations would be get a good job at a reasonable price this time.
Further discussion? Questions? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Counsel, I would be remiss, as Mike comes to the podium, after having given Mr. Google our, our time about the sun coming in last week, if I didn't note the fact that we now have blinds on the doors in the back. My last certainly did not mean to ridicule him or his work. It appears to have been very effective in getting us some shade up here, so that none of us are going to.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add to that. When I came in early this evening, I was talking to Ms. Duncan, and she said, at our last meeting, I saw everybody kind of dodging the sun, and I made a note. And then, then it came up, and then so I believe you're the one who, you threw down the hammer and told.
However, I do need to just make it clear that we only budgeted in this fiscal year for that. It wasn't in the next fiscal year, so we will have to remove them.
It does not surprise me a bit that Tammy would be the one to drop the hammer.
That's right.
Okay. Let's move to the second item of new business, the renovation of 113 Berry Avenue for the City of Greer offices. Mr. Sell?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, counsel. As some background information on this, in last July, we secured the services of SGA to help us with design and construction, drawing services for about 11,000 to 12,000 square feet of the Berry Avenue facility for use in staff and operations. Conceptuals were developed, and counsel may recall that we, when we had the drop-in for engineering moving- for engineering moving into the facility, that they were presented during that time. Following that, we began a, working with SGA to develop schematic drawings for the facility that would be used to help with them in partnership to secure construction services. We sent out an RFQ for those services. We had four respondents. After a process evaluating those four responses, three were selected for follow-up interviews. After another evaluation period, we identified Reeves Young as the selected contractor. They entered into an agreement with us to help arrive at a guaranteed maximum price for the project, working with us and the architect and them together to come up with the final construction drawings for the plan. The original schematic design budget was $2,046, I mean, $46,041. The guaranteed maximum price after the process was over with was $1,908,000, $908,018,000, a difference of $138,023. It is staff's recommendation to accept the guaranteed maximum price.
Council, comes with a reference from, referral from, count, excuse me, from staff, and action is required. I'll entertain a motion to receive. Is that moved?
Second.
Floor is open for discussion.
Mike, is this a guaranteed maximum not to exceed?
Not to exceed.
So it could come in at 1.8, 1.7?
Good, yes, sir, and that is the intent, to do that. The only way it would change to go above it is our choices that we would make if we needed to add to the scope for some reason, which I don't intend to do.
Others?
Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Council, item three this evening, resolution number 8-2023, is going to need some explanation that will occur in executive session. I'm going to ask that we just hold this matter for first and final reading until after executive session. So with that, we will move to executive session. Do I hear a motion to move to executive session?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we enter into executive session to discuss three contractual matters, one pertaining to project lineout, two for project Indy, three for project Titus, as allowed by state statute, section 30-478-2.
Comes as a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
In executive session, we stay here in the room to receive information that is allowed by state statute. With out an audience, you're welcome to wait in the lobby, and we'll let you know when we will finish the meeting.
Council, in executive session, we have considered three contractual matters. We have taken no action in executive session in regards to that per state statute. I will ask that we come out of executive session, having, having discussed the matters of project lineout, project Indy, and project Titus. Do I hear a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
And Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Council, item three this evening, resolution number 8-2023, part of that was to information that was shared in executive session. We can now, by motion, for the purpose of discussion, entertain the first and final reading of resolution 8-2023. I'll entertain a motion to receive. So moved. And a second.
Second.
Mr. Merriman?
Yeah, council, thank you. This is a reimbursement resolution designed to allow the city to begin work on the projects listed in the resolution, and if, in fact, we move forward with the financing plan that is being developed, we have the ability to reimburse the general fund out of those, those funds that will be identified through those various financing initiatives. So this is not a, we're not spending money today necessarily related to the construction of any of these projects, but it allows the city to reimburse any soft costs that are company, that are correlated with the projects outlined in the reimbursement resolution.
Floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Stand adjourned.